City Hall, 29 North Day Street, Orange, New Jersey, on Tuesday, February 4th, 2014, at 7:00 PM. We're doing an enroll call. Councilmember Adoel Rashid is absent. Councilmember Corbett.
Here.
Councilwoman Easton. Councilmember Gorm Butler is absent. Councilwoman Jones Bell.
Here.
Councilman Marable.
Yes.
And Council President Williams.
Present.
Also present, Ms. Smith from the Deputy Clerk's Office, Dan Smith from the City Attorney's Office, Marty Mays, representing the administration, and Mr. Mayor from the Clerk's Office. Please stand for a moment of silence.
Council President.
Councilwoman Marable.
As a point of order, as it relates to who's here and in what capacity, I believe Mr. Mays is sitting in the capacity in which he was introduced now for the second meeting. Has there been any change in the status of the Acting Business Administrator that I'm not aware of?
Councilwoman Marable, can we wait till we get to a more discussion part so we can get through the agenda and not... Can we just wait till we get into a more of a discussion part? I am going to open it up for matters of discussion real briefly due to the snow, so if you can wait till we move down the agenda and discuss it at that time. Well, he's just here as a representative. I understand the difference of your question, but can we move through the agenda and answer that question later?
You're asking my permission. I'd just like to have the question answered. If you want to turn it into a discussion, that's fine.
No, no.
I just... I just want to know.
Please be apprised, anyone wishing to discuss agenda or general items shall sign one book. There will be two columns in the book, one for agenda items and one for general issues. Each person signing the book will check the agenda items or general issues. If they check only agenda items or general issues, they will be allowed to speak for five minutes. If they check general issues and agenda items, they will be allowed to speak for 10. The requirements of NJSA 10, column 4-1, at set, the Sunshine Law has been met. Notice of the meeting was sent to Star Ledger and published in the record transcript on July 18, 2013, posted on the bulletin board in City Hall, and filed in the office of the municipal clerk.
Item 3, matters for discussion. Before we go into item 3, let the record reflect that Councilwoman Gorm Butler has arrived at 7:10 PM. As the agenda reflects, that there are no items for matters for discussion, I actually called Director Mays in light of some of the upcoming storms. I asked if he would just put a brief statement on the record so that for the residents who are listening, just to give some directives. Mr. Mays, do you want to do it from there or from the podium? Your choice.
I'll go to the podium.
Councilwoman Easton.
Just a second, order. Just a second, Councilwoman Marable. I'm being Councilwoman Easton. Yes, Councilwoman Easton.
Why are you two him doing that? Couldn't we address Councilwoman Marable's question? I think we need that...
His statement is three minutes. It's a direct statement. It's not a back and forth. It's a direct statement.
But I have something I want to say to him.
Well, what this is...
So, I just saying, why don't we... We need the agenda to be clear before we start the meeting. So, I think we need to go back and have Councilwoman Marable's question answered before we start the meeting.
Councilwoman Easton, we're in the meeting. The meeting has started.
I know, but I mean, I think I would like to know the same thing. So, we don't have on record anybody as a business administrator. So, I mean, is... You say he's representing the administration, but he's...
Councilwoman Easton, let me... Councilwoman Easton, I respect your request. I will answer the question after this. It's a short statement. Let me get through it. And this is what I've said to Director Mays, that I don't believe there's going to be need for any back and forth, but if there is, depending on how extensive the questions are, because the storm is actually moving very fast, and it may get here before we leave or may not. So, I would like to see everybody get home. Other people have to go farther than some. So, if his question, the statement that Mr. Mays is about to make regarding just some information in terms of snow, snow removal, how the city works with snow, if it warrants a lot of questions from the city council members, I will even ask if you can do that during your council comments. I just asked him at 6:30 to make a statement, and we would kind of vary how many... We would look at the questions from the council, if any, and decide if we need to do a Q&amp;A during this period or do it during council comments. So, he has a statement, and we will go right to Councilman Marable. Director Mays?
Good evening, Director Marty Mays, Director of Planning and Development, DPW. Basically, I just want to say a couple of things about the snow and the various storms that we had this winter. I just wanted to give a brief and quick update, maybe some questions later. First of all, I just want to alert the council to the fact that there's been several snowstorms this winter, and with each of those snowstorms, the city incurs a cost for various things. One is salary and wages, manpower. The second one is the actual purchase of the salt itself, which we get from several places at this time. And we're actually looking at other alternatives on how we purchase and we get salt. Everybody knows that salt is the number-one fighter in terms of ice with these snowstorms. They say that if you apply salt within the first four hours of any snowstorm, that you do numerous things. One is you open up the main roads. You allow for the emergency vehicles to go through and pass, and you decrease the probability of car accidents. So, like all the other towns in New Jersey, that's one of the main things that we do. That's why you always hear me talk about having the proper equipment to be able to put down that salt. And right now, just to touch on the equipment, we had several storms this winter. We have several trucks that are breaking down, and this, these breakdowns, I consider...
Director Mays, the council is your cheerleader for you, but just in terms of the citizens' safety. I understand, I don't want you... Because I want us to be real tight with this in terms of the street's safety in the snow. And we understand your needs in that terms, but I...
Well, I just wanted to get that point across just in terms of what the residents could do. Number one is, if you have a driveway, please park your car in the driveway. That's one of the main problems that we have in terms of clearing the streets after the snow is falling. Also, if you're going to shovel out your car, try not to throw the snow back into the street. That just creates a major problem. If you have any problems on your street or in your area that you need to report after the storms, please do that. That's important. We keep a running list of streets that need more attention. And right now, I've talked with a lot of the council members. I don't know if it's all right for me to say for your constituents to call you, but that's... A lot of times, I get calls from the council members, and that helps as well. Or you could call the Public Works Office. The main number is 973-266-4031. The other thing, which is a major thing, is that, you know, hopefully, for this impending storm, people have gone out and did their running around and their shopping for essentials or whatever they need, because also there's always a lot of traffic out there, believe it or not. You know, in the middle of the night, you see people out there driving, and it hampers the efforts in order to, you know, to allow good access to the streets for the public works employees to plow. Just another quick thing is that, you know, it takes a couple of passes to open up a street. It's not seeing a truck come down your street just one time. Most of the time, there's three or four passes of a truck to open the street up from curb to curb, and that's what we would like to do. After it snows, make sure that you move your car if there's alternate side, street of the park, alternate side, street parking. The next day after a storm, move your car so we can come and do the other side. We had a lot of issues with that. I think we've been working well with the police. I think we need to do a little bit better, though, as well, because there are a lot of streets that say no parking when it's snow covered, and cars actually don't move. And we have been ticketing a lot of cars as well. So, I just wanted to give a brief update. That's where we are, and I really think the Public Works Department has done a good job so far this winter. I think that the men have really... We have some guys that really know what they're doing when it comes to dealing with these snowstorms, which is a positive. And, you know, I just wanted to say that little bit about the equipment, because I firmly believe with better equipment, we could do an even better job.
Thank you. We'll get your check right after the meeting. Now, just council members, wait more. Director Mays, stay. Is it... Can we ask the questions during your council comments, or would you prefer to do so now?
I prefer now.
Okay. And are you okay with Director Mays sitting back in his chair now? Director... Councilman Marable?
The biggest issue is, I'm not going to tell him where to sit.
Councilman Marable?
Yes, Mr. Mays, you alluded to my question. I'll be very brief. Where parking is prohibited on one side of the street for certain days and hours, and the other side of the street, parking is prohibited when there's a snowstorm. I'm speaking now specifically, but not exclusively, to Lincoln Avenue. What is the expectation of where people will park? There's no legal place at that point for them to park. What is the expectation?
Well, that's what actually Councilman Marable, that was brought up last week, Councilwoman Gorm. And that situation is... You are correct, there are... And I didn't mention that at the mic, but there are several streets that conflict, and we are now looking at that, trying to determine how to make that situation better. So, that was actually... They come up last week, and you absolutely right about that. That's not the only street. There hasn't been a complete review of that, and that's what I've asked our city engineer to take on so we can try to eliminate those problems in the future.
Okay, while I appreciate that, I'm not sure if I'm hearing an answer. What is the expectation currently? Until it gets reassessed and readdressed, what are people expected to do? Because they can't levitate their cars, and they can't park miles away, because there's no parking there either.
What we've done, and we talked to the police about this, is, for example, actually on Lincoln Avenue, we did have the police car out there for a couple of hours just flashing his lights, trying to give people the opportunity to move their cars. Right now, the system is unfortunately is not perfect, but that's where we are now. I think that we have to do a more coordinated job of that. And I take the penalty of the brain for that, because, you know, it's something that we need to do. Literally, look at all the signs in the city. Should have been done prior. We didn't really get an opportunity to do it, but we are looking at it now. I've asked the engineer to put together a study, and he's going street by street to look at that.
Director Mays? Do you have a short-term plan for tomorrow?
Short-term plan is just what I alluded to earlier. If your street is affected in that way, you will see the police out there flashing their lights, and that is a signal to people to come out and move your car if you parked on the wrong side. And another thing I didn't mention, I mentioned briefly, is you have a lot of cars that don't move for whatever reason, whether the cars are not working. But those cars, if they're working, they should be moved to the alternate side of the street. You have a lot of people that just don't move them, and that's another issue.
A quick suggestion, if I could, and I don't know if any one city attorney otherwise would deem it inappropriate. I don't think you should try and influence the municipal court's decision of cases, but I think it might be appropriate if the city forwarded the court a letter indicating the nature of the problem, the fact that it's a hardship for residents and that there are few alternatives, just advising the court of the status of things so that people are not being unnecessarily ticketed, but then convicted and fined for things that are outside of their...
Yeah, I don't mind doing that, but as I stated earlier, it's not every street.
I never said it was.
No, I'm just letting you know that there are streets where the signage is.
And those are the ones for which that letter might be specifically addressed to help those residents avert. And the concern is that, you know, they're going to be going to court, spending money, spending time. And I'm not, again, I'm not asking you to tell the court what to do, but simply alert the court to the issue that city is working on it, and perhaps the court could do what it views to be the best, you know, best response to that. All right.
Attorney Smith?
Hold on, no, I would have caution, Mr. Mays.
Attorney, well, I think it's just by way... It's a quick solution, and I don't want to go back and forth.
I think the quick solution...
Yes.
The quick solution is merely...
To your mic, to your mic.
The quick solution is merely that Mr. Mays may want to put up some type of signs for the residents as opposed to trying to alert the court to a possible resolution of a case.
Councilwoman Easton?
You want to... Can we ask Attorney Smith to expand on that?
Your mic, Councilwoman, I'm sorry.
Can you ask to... A quick, just tell them where to park or that they may get ticketed.
Exactly. If he may place some signs on the streets notifying the residents where they should park during this emergency.
Do we have... Building for temporary zones?
That they may get ticketed if they don't move their cars?
Just to be clear, there is no place for them to park. That's the heart of the issue.
Okay, one second. Councilwoman Easton actually on the floor. Okay.
If there is no place for them to park, obviously, the court can take judicial notice of weather conditions at the time it adheres to case. So, if it is presented to them that because... And I think it would be pretty obvious that if there's a snow emergency, the court would take that into account on its own without any effort from Mr. Mays.
Attorney Smith, but are you... Can you send the letter to the court? Please be advised that we're working on these various streets. You can send the court to assign a judge at...
We can apprize the court of the weather conditions.
Okay. Not of the weather condition of the streets, specific streets that we're having issues with.
That's true.
Okay. Councilwoman Easton?
Well, Mr. Mays, I just want... Washington and Cleveland, could you guys just pay special attention to cleaning it? And my question, I guess, if that's a... If it's a county road, does it county flower, or do we flower?
If it's a county road, the county would flower.
So, they do high street?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, because one of the senators called me today. He was on Washington, Cleveland. He thought it was a poor job. So, could you guys just make sure you do the northward and do the streets, make sure they're as clean as you can get them?
Okay.
Councilwoman Gorm Butler?
Yes, thanks. Thank you, Council President. We had actually discussed a potential solution for the Lincoln Avenue situation, and that solution potentially was going to be the old police station or the old Tremont Avenue school. There is a parking lot there. The only issue is, is that it would have to be plowed before residents could park in that parking lot, and it is still city property. And I know we spoke with Mr. Mays and Director Sims about it, and I just want to make sure that that's a potential solution that we could implement as a short-term plan.
Mr. Mays, do you need to respond?
No, that's good.
Any other questions? Seeing none. Councilman Marable, on your second... Would you... Are you making a general statement, or would you like to pose a question to Director Mays or Mrs. Smith?
I don't want to make a statement. I asked a question. I can...
Could you reiterate the question, please?
Certainly. Mr... In terms of going to the list of individuals present on the agenda and in what capacity, for the last two meetings, Mr. Mays has sat in the chair he's currently sitting in, and tonight was introduced as the representative of the administration, notwithstanding the fact that Mr. Map is here tonight and was here at the last meeting, and he's listed only as the Director of Finance. I'm just wondering if there's been a change in his status, if he is no longer the Acting Business Administrator, and I'd just like to know.
Attorney Smith?
I have received a... Mr. Map is here, and he can speak to what his position is at this. I believe he's indicated that he's still the Director of Finance. I believe Mr. Mays is sitting here in place of Mr. Map to handle the business of the city, the city of the business.
Mr. Map?
Okay, that doesn't answer my question.
I know.
I'm asking specifically if there has been a decision made that Mr. Map would no longer continue in the title Acting Business Administrator simply because it's not uncommon in this city for people to be named and unnamed, and no one tells us.
Yes, sir. Mr. Map?
I'm Adrian Map, Director of Finance, and I would strongly urge the governing body to direct that question to the mayor.
Oh, Mr. Map. As you know, the mayor's not here. So, are you free to say whether you're still... You're not...
I am here as the Director of Finance.
That's not my question, and that was not... Councilman Marable, are you still wearing the title or carrying the title Acting Business Administrator? And you have to answer.
I am here solely as the Director of Finance.
I hear that. And you may say, I don't want to answer it. And the question is, are you still carrying the title as Acting Business Administrator?
If I were, I would have informed you as such. I am the Director of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Map. Let's the record reflect that Mr. Map did not answer the question. I apologize.
Can I ask him another question?
Of course you can.
Mr. Map?
Yes.
I'll bowl down your lane. How long have you just been the Director of Finance?
I am the Director of Finance. That's the only position I hold with the City of Orange, Director of Finance and Qualified Purchase and Agent.
I heard that. How long have you only been that?
It's based on the statute of the City of Orange. Your local municipal code is very specific in terms of how long a person can act. And so, I believe that every member of the governing body received the letter that appointed me at the time as the Acting Business Administrator.
Director Map. And I'm not trying to be disrespectful.
Yes.
You have a great way of being very specific.
Yes.
When we ask a question, and now you're being very broad.
Okay.
So, we know the author of that legislation is here. So, can you go back to the specific date that that... And if not, that's fine.
October the 11th.
Thank you so much. October the 11th was the last day you acted in...
I believe that's the date that I was appointed.
When was the last day that you were no longer the Acting Business Administrator? And if you don't know, it's fine.
If I were to take October the 11th...
And just say 90 days.
And just add 90 days. That's the answer.
Well, there's a lot of holidays, but okay. Well, you're no longer wearing that. Okay, thank you. Is any other... Wait, Mr. Map? I'm not... Because I was not addressing... Mr. Director... I'm sorry. Councilman Marable, you have any follow-up questions? Any other council member before Mr. Map leave? No? Thank you so much. Moving on to item number four, Resolutions and Ordinances.
The resolutions and ordinances to be presented at tonight's meeting are listed on the attached regular meeting agenda. If any council member wishes to discuss any resolution or ordinance, it may be discussed at this time.
Councilmember? Councilwoman Easton? Forty dash 2014.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that?
Forty dash 2014. The bill is... Before you start, Councilwoman Easton, on page one, the $95 on page one has to be removed. That was put there in error. Councilwoman Easton? And that's page one. Did everybody see that?
Ninety-five.
Yes.
Is that Arts World?
Yes.
Professional Services.
Okay.
Cherry Magic.
You want me to start, Councilwoman Easton, while you look?
Okay.
On page one, I'm going to ask this council if they would support when we finish an amended bill list, that if we remove at the bottom of page one, unless I know different, those... That equipment, those computers, is that the computers? Or was that what we budgeted for last year, Councilwoman Easton? That, remember, we talked about a table or something?
And that was going to be donated. You could give for the planning board?
Right.
Yeah. I guess they...
Can Mr. Mays speak to that?
Yeah.
There's actually two computers, desktop... These are desk computers.
Two bills.
Yeah, so they have to... Until we actually get an overall assessment of computers.
Can I speak to that, please?
You're short time.
Yeah, we... I want to speak to that, because those computers are for the planning department, which is my department, and I understand what the council is saying. They want an overall plan, but a lot of the things that we asked for, we asked for a year ago. So, these things that you're seeing right now is from a year ago, and with the computer person who services and monitors computers, for me, these are computers that the individuals or the staff members are working on computers that are basically no longer working. And that's why I wanted to move this forward, and I wanted to have the opportunity to speak about it. This is, other than the planning board's computer, the other computers are for individuals where their computers are basically shot. So, that's the only reason why I put this on here, and I wanted to have the discussion with the council, because they're in very key situations. For example, one of the computers is for our technical assistant where all of the permits are processed. And right now, we're on some type of a system where we're actually sharing two computers. Like, one computer can be on, and the other one can't be on. So, you have to... The people have to pick and choose what's more valuable to work on right now, and it's not a good situation. So, I definitely want to try to rectify that. And then, with the planning board, as you know, Larry Samuels didn't have an office or anything. We've made a couple of switches. He's now located up here. He has space to do the planning board activity. And at one time, they did say that stuff was going to be donated to him. That stuff never came to fruition. And again, this is all stuff that I talked about a year ago that I'm trying to rectify before the new budget comes out.
Director Mays, but without being... We've also asked for a complete list detailing all of the computers in City Hall, date of purchase and use, and we have not gotten it, and it's fallen on deaf ears. So, if it were an emergent matter, it would seem that the request that we only had, it was not that we didn't want the departments to be more efficient. We wanted the purchase of computers to be more efficient, to do it in a holistic manner, and we have not received that. So, you know, I'm one person, but it's my... And we have other computers. We also have computers on page seven for the law department, and then one on page nine for the Division of Agent. So... And again, it's just in the matter of being able to manage the city. We're asking to help us, and it was the same, you know, with the automobile list. We just need a copy, a list of the computers, because what can also be... We've... I know in my lifetime of sitting here on this council, we've probably purchased a lot of computers. So, I would like to know if the computers for their intended use are not being used, and can somebody else just get one of the new computers that have been purchased recently, and they're not sitting somewhere not being used? Councilwoman Easton?
And I was going to say also, I think there needs to be some replacements in the Clerk's Office. So, why wouldn't we do that as a purchase overall for the City Hall and get some economies of scale on how many computers we purchased? Why are we piecemealing it? Like, I know the Clerk's Office needs some new ones. So, why wouldn't we look at what we need and do it as a bulk order versus individual? Mr. Mays?
I don't have a problem with that. I just want to get my needs across, looking at my department right now. And I feel like I'm in a crisis situation. And I'm sure that some of these other departments are in a crisis information. I'm not taking away from you saying that you didn't get what you wanted. I'm just letting you know what type of situation I'm in. And I'm sure, as you're saying, other departments are in that situation as well. But I'm not discounting that you want something. You want a comprehensive list, but that's just the way we are in terms of computers. We in dire need. And I don't know if there could be some type of a... And I don't know if there could be some type of a compromise or...
And, and I want to say also, I understand your position, but why is it certain things become dire need, but when we ask for other things that don't? Like, the Police Department needs their card access. That's an emergency. But that's not here tonight. I mean, we didn't get the stuff on that. So, I mean, certain things has to be prioritized, and it can't always be about a certain department. You've got to look at where they are with their card access, and the cops can't get in out of the Police Department. So, I mean, and that was my statement about that. Go ahead, and then I'll just...
And Director Mayes, also, it appears that some of these computers are being purchased, and I'm looking at the whole list, not just your department. Some are being purchased out of the 2013 budget and some out of the 2014 temporary budget. So, your computers look like from last year's budget? They were encumbered on October 15th?
Those are just requests from last year. This is, that's what I meant by that. This is that some of these things are the same things that I was asking for last year.
No, I got you.
Now, it's a year later.
Where will they be charged, for 2013 or 2014?
I think they'll be in the new one. I have to go back and double check.
Director Matt?
If you look closely at the bill list, and you will see the account numbers beginning with a three, that means that they were charged to 2013.
So, any account number start with three will be charged to 2013?
That's correct.
And any starting with a...
A four.
Or it's 2014?
Correct.
And I just, can I just say, one of these, the stuff for the Planning Department was approved in the 13 budget. That's my point that I'm trying to make as well. Even despite that I was asking for that list, those dollars were still appropriated for these specific things.
But Director Mayes, they were, and the reason they were held off is based on the council receiving the list showing this.
And Council President, the only reason they could be charged to 2013 is because the purchase orders were issued in 2013. The funds were encumbered in 2013.
Right. I just wanted to clarify.
Okay.
Any other questions regarding the bill list?
Oh, okay.
Councilwoman Neeson, yes?
On page... Three? I remember last year at the end, like, November, December, we were, why were we spending five hundred and fifty dollars for a sign?
Directors, where you are, page three, five fifty, okay. Director Mayes? At near the bottom, second one up above, snow removal.
Oh, this five hundred dollars is for a sign for the, I believe, the Central Playground Baseball Field. It's a, it's a sign indicating that it's basically underway and about to be completed. And we looking at having several different ceremonies there at the park. And one of the things that, you know, I did based on the council's request, they wanted to make sure that the council was on the sign. I made sure that the council was on the sign. We did a sign like that at another park where the council wasn't mentioned. So, I just wanted to make sure that I put that in there so the council knows that that was part of this sign. But basically, that's what the sign is.
For clarification, is this a banner or a sign?
This is a sign.
Is it permanent?
It's not permanent. It's going to be probably taken down, but not till a while. We got a long way to go with that sign, but it's not a permanent sign, no.
Doesn't have Councilman Marable's name on it?
No, it has the council on it. I made sure because that first sign...
Please don't put my name on it. Is that the sign with the mayor's photo on it?
Yes.
Okay, please don't put my name on it.
I don't know why we're spending money doing those. That was my, page five. And I think this is a question for Deputy Director Wooton. The basketball uniforms, are we doing basketball this year? I mean, nobody knows that we are, so I'm just wondering why this money is here?
Good evening. My name is Adrian Wooton. I'm the Deputy Director of Community Services. We do have a basketball program that's going on this afternoon, I mean, this year. It opens up on Saturdays. It is a skills and drills program, and it's also where all of the elementary schools get together on Saturdays and they play each other like we normally do.
Do you know when it started, or when it's starting?
It's, that basketball program started Saturday past, I believe.
At all of the schools?
All of the schools have basketball. All of the elementary schools have basketball teams. So, we purchase jerseys for them every year.
Councilwoman, if I could follow up on that, it's related.
Councilwoman Marable? Sure.
That was really going to be my question. My assumption was that we would purchase them and then hold on to them and reuse them because we purchased new uniforms last year. Are you suggesting that every year we have to purchase new uniforms?
Well, I haven't been here every year, but it was customary. This is what was told to me.
Not every year. I don't mean to cut you off. I'm talking about last year and this year. You were here last year.
I was, and it was customary, according to my staff, that we buy the basketball jerseys for the elementary schools, and at the end of the season, we give them their jerseys.
My son played basketball for the city. No one gave him anything. Just so you know.
Is the mayor's name on these?
Yes.
Are they on the new ones?
I'm not sure of the artwork, but I'll let you know. Can I let you know tomorrow?
Because I thought we, and I remember going through this a couple of years ago, or last year, the year before, that we wouldn't put anybody's name up there so they could be used year after year.
Okay.
And we don't have to keep spending this money.
Okay.
So, could you just check and make sure that they are generic?
Yes, ma'am.
And I don't know if, if we want to pull them off until we find that out because I think they should be generic because every year we will be purchasing jerseys.
Okay.
And we just can't afford to do that anymore.
All right.
And don't leave. You want to make a comment?
Yeah, I just want to make a quick comment if I can. I just want to indicate that if anything should go on the jerseys, it should only be the name of the school and the number. That's it.
Okay.
Now, Councilwoman Neeson, regarding that, if they're playing, is... Is it too late to, are we, do they have the jerseys in their possession?
They do.
So, they're already ordered and they are here?
Yes, ma'am.
And they're wearing them? And while you're there, I'm going to go down to coaches' football shirts. The red tents? Yeah.
Seven hundred and twenty-three dollars.
Oh, page five at the bottom there.
And they were for what?
These were purchased for the football team.
They did have a football team?
Mm-hmm.
They went to...
Went to, right.
Are we purchasing them every year or are they reusable?
These are reusable by the coaches.
So, they don't, so next year, we won't see this on the bill list?
We shouldn't. We didn't purchase any last year, so we purchased them this year.
And then I have, then the other one is the after-school basketball program, four thousand dollars.
Page one there.
Page six.
Page six.
That's in the, after-school basketball, four thousand dollars.
Actually, six thousand dollars. There's another two thousand on page eight.
It is?
This is part of the Girls and Boys Travel Basketball League. They play on Saturdays and Thursdays, I believe.
And that's funded, I thought that had its own funding. That's through recreation?
Yes, ma'am.
Because it, these things, and how do they select the players? That's my other question. For the traveling teams?
We go out, the coaches go out, and they recruit at the schools, and then there's a tryout, and then you make the team.
And it's costing us, but it doesn't explain what the four thousand is for. That's what I...
Six thousand.
Six thousand, what the six thousand is for. I guess that's my question. What does that cover?
And Ms. Wooton, before you answer, let the record reflect that Councilwoman Abdul Rashid arrived at 7:46 PM. What's the six thousand cover?
It was a proposal presented to us where this organization would run that basketball program. Out of that, salaries would be paid, transportation costs would be paid. If any uniforms ought to be purchased, they will be paid out of that. And this program also, that money also coincides with the Saturday program as well. But to make sure that I'm perfectly clear and giving you the correct information, if I'm allowed to, I will give you a detailed copy of everything that that six thousand dollars is going to incur.
Councilwoman Neeson, could I follow up?
Um, you want to...
Could I follow up?
You want to ask the question? Yeah, then I have one, one final question.
So, if you're paying six thousand, where does the six to nine program fall in that six, that money, and money that we... Because it's, it's like the programs are going on here and there, but not collectively. And they were all, like, I believe the six to nine program was a collective budget of fifty thousand, twenty-five for the city, and twenty-five for the school board. So, where does that fit in? And this was, I believe, funds that will come out of that. So, now, how do you...
This money was, um, we don't have a six to nine program running right now. Like, six to nine, as you and some of your fellow council people will know, six to nine. So, what we did was we took a portion of the six to nine program to run that program and make sure that the children in Orange did have something to do. We have met with the Superintendent of the Orange Board of School of Education, and so what we're doing is trying to put together a program which we can open back up, the six to nine program, as you know, as you know it, like, as you would have known it in the past.
So, you reallocated the funds?
I am not going to say the funds were reallocated. To answer all those questions and to not try to answer them off the top of my head, I will be glad to sit down with you and give you everything that you're asking for tonight.
Councilwoman Neeson?
That was going to be my question, the status of the six to nine. Are you aware that we have coaches, people that are willing to volunteer to run the six to nine program because they have the kids at the door begging to have that program?
I am.
And it is now, what, February?
It is.
And we need to, so that's what would be my question. When do you think we can have something for those students? I can understand the traveling, but if I had a choice between the traveling team and having the local kids have someplace to go at night, I would have taken the local team and let the traveling teams wait for a little bit.
Okay.
Because they are not really addressing the needs of the community as to where we have all these young people, and we're trying to give them something to do. So, rather than take the money from the six to nine, I would have rather seen the money stay with six to nine, have us open that six to nine program, and let the traveling team wait. So, I think we robbed Peter to pay Paul, but we robbed, we ended up robbing the wrong Peter.
Well, as I said, I don't know if the funds are reallocated. I will get that information together from you to make sure that I'm being correct and truthful for the record, and I'll give you all that information. So, at that point, you will see if it was reallocated, and you can also see what line item on the budget the money was taken from.
And just for, it's also, we are, just to be clear, that a program that's a council know is a program that the citizens of Orange have come to appreciate and look forward to, and we have received, I'm sure individually, a various amount of calls about the program and why it's not moving forward. And the students are looking, the parents are looking for it, the students are looking for it. And it was a very, because it was built up from one program to many programs that served a lot of our young people from, as you may know or may not know, anywhere from sports, theater, and job readiness, so...
Okay.
Any other questions on the bill list?
Council President.
Councilwoman Abdul Rashid?
Are you aware that the six to nine program has always been in existence, and this is the first time that it has not been in existence?
I, I am.
Are you aware that the administration sent a layoff list to the state?
I'm not privy to that information.
You've never heard of that since you...
I'm not privy to that information, sir.
Not even through the grapevine?
I'm not, I'm, I don't know. I haven't been given that information by the administration.
Okay, and that's fine.
Okay.
Some things I don't even hear through the grapevine.
Okay.
Do you know who, who, who is the Director of Community Services for the City of Orange as of, say, seven months ago?
That would be Wendy Sykes.
And who's the Director of Community Services currently?
Wendy Sykes.
I conclude.
Thank you, Director. I mean, thank you, Councilwoman. Any question on the bill list?
On the bill list, if Councilwoman Neeson is done.
Well, I just want to make another statement, we didn't mention, because back in, what was it, November, we had asked the mayor when we were going through the budget, and she wanted to give us an idea of how much it would cost to run six to nine so we could put it in the budget. He promised to give us a quote or, you know, and we never got it. So, we could have probably had six to nine running. But nothing, but whenever we asked for things, we never get it. So, it's just sit, sit, sits, and sit. Because we were, our intention was to find money someplace to run six to nine.
Right.
But he never gave us what he would projected that it would take to run that program so they could have started it last year.
Okay.
On the bill list, I want to stay there. On page nine at the very bottom, there are funds obviously going to the Orange Memorial Escrow Account.
Page nine?
Page nine at the very bottom.
What's the dollar now?
It's five thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Is there something going on with the, with the Orange Memorial site that would warrant money going into an escrow account?
Value Research Group.
Yes.
Director Mayes, page nine, Value Research Group.
And there's also a hundred and sixty-five dollar payment that went out to McMinn. Yes.
Right, at the bottom there on page nine. Those are payments for escrows for various things that are taking place, and those fees are essentially paid for by the developers. So, those are those payments. That's, that's what you see there.
So, there's some activity going on with the hospital site?
Right, the hospital site for everybody, the hospital site, there are some interested developers. We've been talking to those developers, and we hope to have further talks. The good sign is, and I think I mentioned this to everybody, that they did come in and purchase all of those properties and pay all the back liens on those properties. The hospital site has a new owner who is the same developer that we're going to be working with and looking at moving that project forward.
Is that developer out of New Jersey?
That developer is out of New York.
Got you. Okay.
So, you can vote casually, Councilwoman Neeson?
Mr. Mayes, are you aware that one of the things we said, well, I said last year, until we get some new police officers, there shouldn't be any more new development. We just don't have the personnel to handle it. So, we keep bringing in people, but we do not have police to handle it. So, keep that, because I will not be voting on any more new development until we figure out how we're going to add police officers to the police force and get them the things they need because it doesn't make sense. If you bring people in, you can't protect them. It doesn't make sense. And like I said before, they're stealing everything in my ward that they nailed down. Tires, converters out of cars, you know, so, and I just want to make that, put that in your, in your head.
Any other questions on the bill list?
Council President.
Yes, I do. After Councilwoman Abdul Rashid. Oh, please.
I was remiss. I just, just one quick question. Through you to Mr. Mayes, and this is just one question. Do you know why Ms. Sykes doesn't attend the city council meetings? And we've had some discussions about that so that we could ask her versus this. I'll get back to you. I'll bring the information back. I know she was doing a special project, and if she is in fact the Director of Community Services, then... I mean, even if she attended intermittently, I don't know why, why she, do you know why she's never here again, or when she'll return?
No, I'm sorry, Councilman. I do not know that.
I conclude.
Just for clarification, Ms. Sykes was at the beginning of last meeting.
I beg your pardon?
She was at the beginning of last meeting.
She was at, she was at the beginning?
Yes.
She left early.
She left early.
Well, that still doesn't do us any good, but thank you so much for that clarity.
Councilman Marable? Um, Councilman Marable?
Yes, um, I, I suspect Mr. Map, in his capacity of Director of Finance, may be the best person to speak to this, but I'll direct it to the Chair. At the latter part of the bill list, there are several pages that deal with Hurricane Sandy funding. I would just like a general understanding of, of this document as it relates to that. I have a couple of questions, but I'm just trying to understand what these categories and amounts mean, if, if we could.
And Councilman Marable, if you could look from the page going back, like, the last page is page two, page one, what page are you on?
Well, I'm looking at page three.
From the back, okay. I see it, okay. Director, Map?
Specifically, there, there are amounts approaching a million dollars. I'm just trying to understand what they represent, what that represents.
And you're on page three?
Well, it's the, next to the last page, but I, it's paginated number three.
Okay.
That particular figure, there are several pages, though.
So, for example, on page three, the first amount is 24,000?
That's correct.
Okay. On that page, for example, that pertains to the FEMA workers.
When you say that, the 24,000?
Yes.
So, those are salaries?
That's correct.
That we receive.
Salaries paid?
Yes.
Okay. And the 8,000?
The 8,000 is also for salaries, but you will notice it indicates an interfund, which means, pretty much, it's a transaction between a couple of funds that we carry on the books.
Okay, and the amount...
But it's for salaries.
The, the total amount paid of $974,066.22, what does that represent?
That would represent the payroll for the pay period of January 24th. You'll see there's some dates over to your left, 1/24, that's for the pay period ending 1/24. That's the average, that's the average pay period.
Um, Council...
Between 900 and something to a million dollars.
No, no, no.
Director, Councilman Marable, just for, um, I just, um, if the CFO, if you want to clarify, can you just please join Director Map at the mic? Because she yelled something in the audience, and y'all were saying different numbers, so just so the record is clear. She's talking about the other one.
You, you talking about the entire city payroll or payroll related to Sandy funding?
No, the entire city's payroll.
Okay, you're scaring me.
The entire city's payroll.
I'm thinking I'm going to get Dawn Zimmer on the phone and let her know we got the money.
The entire city's payroll averages 900 and something thousand dollars.
Okay. How would we know, uh, how can we know what we've received in its entirety through Sandy funding?
Um, we would have to look at our financial records to see what monies were received from Hurricane Sandy. But I can't stand here tonight and say to you that we received X or Y.
Dan, I'm not asking you to. I'm just wondering how easy a, a gathering of information that would be. It would seem to be a relative, in a short period of time. Can, can we, can we get that information, sir, in terms of the, the total amount received and perhaps even the total amount expected? I don't know whether there's more coming our way, but I would like to know what we've received thus far. And is there a way to determine with specificity how those funds current, that have been received thus far have been spent?
I can certainly tell you that the CFO can tell us exactly how much money was received for Hurricane Sandy and the purpose for which those funds were received, because it's done on a reimbursement basis.
Well, not the purpose for which they were received, but the way in which they were spent.
And that's, we are saying the same thing, but...
I don't agree.
Well, I can tell you that we receive a check for reimbursement to cover salaries that were paid to employees who perform duties related to Hurricane Sandy.
By way of example, someone hit my car, I got a check. I didn't spend the check to fix the car, I spent the check on a bill.
Okay.
So, you may have the intention of, the funds may be earmarked for something, but that doesn't mean that's how you spend it.
Well, I can tell you that the reimbursement request, which resulted in checks being sent to the city, pertain to Hurricane Sandy.
Can, can we get that in a reasonable period of time? No, there's no rush.
I will ask the, I'm CFO, to provide you and other members of the governing body with whatever funds were received relating to Hurricane Sandy.
I appreciate it. I have nothing else.
Can I just chime in on that for, just quickly, because Councilman...
Just a second. Do you need Director Map to say?
No, I don't. I just wanted, for clarification, I just wanted to be clear that Councilman Marable asked the first question about FEMA workers and FEMA funds. Then he also used the phrase Sandy money, and me sitting here, all that means different things. That means, you just basically talked about three different programs. So, I just want to be clear, are you talking, and I'm trying to get you an answer, are you talking about, one, the FEMA workers? Are you talking about, two, the funds that we may have received from FEMA by way of reimbursement?
Well, sir, we're, we're reading the same document. I, he was, he was giving me information about the 24,003.20, and it says hurricane next to it, and right underneath that, it says Hurricane Sandy. So, I didn't ask him questions about FEMA money. I said, what is that money for? He said FEMA, but it clearly speaks to Hurricane Sandy on the document.
I thought, so I think you're talking about the workers and the county programs, so Mr. Map could be clear on what he needs to look for.
As, as long as you understand that it clearly says Hurricane Sandy.
That's fine.
But, Councilman Williams?
Councilwoman Neeson? Through you to Mr. Mays, isn't that one, the FEMA worker and Hurricane, isn't that one and the same? Is there two different pots of money?
Right, that's exact, it's two different pots of money, and there's actually three programs. So, Sandy is like the buzzword now, I just want to make sure that we all...
But what was the Sandy reimbursement for? I guess that's what, I guess...
I believe, according to his question, that that was for salaries for a program that provides workers.
Well, are they FEMA?
Yes.
So, they were the FEMA, so it's one and the same, then?
It's, it's one, it's one and the same, but we also have, you know, FEMA where we receive money back from the federal program.
Right, you count.
You know, it's different, Sandy is a whole bunch of things. Sandy money is even housing money now. So, it's, I just want to be clear that we all talking about the same thing.
Well, I think, so in that case, you need to break it down then and say, what reimbursement we got for sanding, what was it used for?
Right.
And then you talk about the FEMA workers.
Right, absolutely.
What did we build for, and what did we get back? So, it needs to be broken down in those three components, so we understand. Because I thought the sanding money, the FEMA workers, was one and the same, and you saying it's three different programs.
It's, it's really not. It's all Sandy, but you gotta be, it's kind of, you gotta know kind of what you're talking about. I just want to make sure y'all get the right answer, and there's no confusion.
So, let, let's go back and have Mr. Map clarify. So, for the purpose of what Councilman Marable asked on this report?
Councilwoman Neeson, he said he would provide a report, because he couldn't answer it. He would provide the report.
On the FEMA work...
In a reasonable time.
From all sources, let's just say, from all sources.
Right, from all sources. Because there was actually, I think, a grant from the county as well, so it's various sources. And Mr. Map or Director Mays, one of the outstanding requests from the city council while that report is, it was allocation to hire and previously, on the, the previous weather disaster, and we got an allocation of funds from the county, an allocation of money, money to hire people. The county paid the people directly. I believe this case, we paid them directly. So, we, can we get an accounting of how many people were hired, and are they, the status of the workers as well? Because it looks like there's, some people are still on salary, because you're paying in this most recent payroll. Okay, so, just so, you know, what was the amount of workers and where we at today? You know? Council President. Councilwoman Jones Bell?
Yeah, thank you. Um, on that same note, can you provide the names of the people that were hired for the FEMA work and for whatever it was for, Hurricane Sandy? Because I have somebody outstanding who has not been paid, and I think he's going to get a lawyer, so it's time.
Councilwoman Williams?
And also, while we're on that subject, the FEMA workers were not secured workers, Mr. Mays. So, I think that's another issue, you guys need to address that. And I, City Hall collects money, so, and I don't need it at that, but the thing about it is, the people that work in City Hall and in the Police Department should be secured public service workers, not FEMA workers, because they are not secure. So, and I think you guys need to pay special attention to that before something happens and we all regret it.
Councilwoman Abdul Rashid?
Council President, through you to, uh, Mr. Mays. Mr. Mays, are you aware that the administration has been saying that they received $750,000 from the Christie administration relative to the library? Are you aware of that?
I've heard that, but I really haven't had any dealings with that.
Okay, but at least you heard it through the grapevine. Okay, good. Um, if in fact that's true, where would that money, where would that money be at on the paper? Like, in other words, I, I know it's not on the bill list, but where, perhaps that's a more appropriate question for Mr., Mr. Map. Where would that, since we did receive the $750,000, where, where would we see that in black? Where's the documentation to certify, verify, and substantiate that? So, it's just not through the grapevine?
If a grant was received by the library for $750,000, it will not be reflected anyplace on our books. If the grant was received by the City of Orange, we would have received an award letter, and we would reflect that in the budget.
So, so, so if the library received the $750,000 from the Christie administration as the administration is purporting, then it wouldn't come to your office at all?
No, it will not.
Okay. Would you even hear about that?
You've been talking about it.
Let me, let me just finish, let me just finish. I, I beg your pardon, I don't want to disrespect, my thoughts are a little slower than yours. Uh, but if, if, since we do, the city does do collaborations with the library financially, however you want to word that, that would be something that you would hear, $750,000. I mean, because the administration is asking the council to pass a $9 million bond ordinance, which is, so, you probably would hear that at least through the grapevine, wouldn't you?
I've heard it, yes.
Okay, I, I conclude.
Councilwoman Neeson?
Mr. Map, before you sit down, I remember when that was awarded, and I thought, unless, unless I'm misunderstanding, that $750,000 came during the hacking administration, I'll put it that way. And it needed matching funds. But it came in through the city, and then it was appropriated to the library with the request that we do matching funds or they couldn't use it. So, what changed about that?
I cannot speak about anything that may or may not have occurred during the hacking administration. I can tell you that in the bond ordinance that is on the table, I believe there is an amount of $750 in that ordinance to be used as matching funds for the purpose of capital improvements at the library. And the 750...
You mean 750,000?
Yes, yeah, 750,000. 750,000. That's all I can speak to.
Yeah, because I understand is, the 750,000 would initially, some of it has already been spent, prior to Governor Christie saying he was giving us 750,000. So, that's where the confusion is. And that's, and it was, okay.
All right, any more discussions on resolutions and or ordinances? Any other ordinances or resolutions or discussion? If not, we're going to have a motion.
Motion opposed, second.
Motion by Councilwoman Neeson, second, by Councilwoman Jones Bell. For both, both, just because it's different.
Councilmember Abdul Rashid?
In favor.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gobert?
In favor.
Councilwoman Jones Bell?
Yes.
Councilman Marable?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes.
Did you forget, you said?
Council President, I'm sorry.
You're saving the best for last.
Councilwoman Neeson?
Yes.
I don't know why you're at last, but...
The meeting is adjourned at 8:11 PM. We're going to take a meeting, please, we took a five minute, before we start, 8:16, not a break, 8:16.
...that was passed at the last city council meeting. Independent of that, more dependent upon the budget process, have you spoken to the directors with respect to cutting back their budgets, making a presentation to you and their availability for tentative budget dates? Just a, a part of the whole budget process? Because technically, we're in the budget process effective at January 1st, as you know. Now, it's February 4th, so I, I would imagine that most of us would agree that we're in that curve now?
We have spoken to department heads relative to their budget submissions, and we've had lengthy discussions about the timely submission from them of their budgets. In terms of discussions with the department heads about being available for budget hearings, that has not occurred. A budget hearing calendar has not yet been established, and so, we have not had a discussion with the department heads about their availability for budget hearings.
Uh, just very briefly, Council President, through you to Mr. Map. Mr. Map, when you were up here before, I don't remember, I just asked you briefly, did you hear about the $750,000 that the administration is saying that they received? You indicated that that would go to the, to the, you know, to the boards, they would get that money or, you know, documentation. And I said, but since the administration and the library board does collaborations in terms of financing and so forth, you said that, you know, you, you would have heard about it. So, even though as the Director of Finance, and you're not on the library board, surely if the library board received $750,000 as the administration is, has clearly stated, and it's documented on tape and in, and in print, that they received $750,000, wouldn't, wouldn't you, in your position, ask the library board for documentation to verify that versus the, the grapevine, even though the money doesn't come to you? I mean, that, that would be something that you, as a Director of Finance, would, would want to know, just, just to know.
As Director of Finance for the City of Orange, I do not get involved in the finances of the library.
Last, last question. So, the previous executive directors didn't come to 29 North Day Street to speak to the previous BAs about library board finances?
I know that when I first came here, I had conversations with the then director about his budget, and the library presents a budget request to the administration. That is the extent of the involvement of the finance department with the library's finances, in that the library presents a budget request to the finance department.
Lastly, Council President, through you to Mr. Map, and this certainly is my last question. Since we don't have a acting and/or definitive VA, who are you getting your financial directions and your vision and mission for this new budget direction from?
We have a mayor of the City of Orange, his name is Dwayne Warren.
Why, well, I know that, so you're saying you're getting it from the mayor?
I do...
Because I knew he was the mayor July 1st of 2012, so I, I knew that. I, I was asking you, who are you getting your directions from?
I work very closely with the mayor of the City of Orange. I also work very closely with Mr. Mays.
So, you're getting your directions from Mr. Mays?
Mr., um, Councilor Abdul Rashid, I currently get directions from the mayor.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Council President, through you to, to, to Mr. Mays. Mr. Mays, I'm, I'm deferring to the January 17th budget, budget bill list, which I just happened to have here. I, I apologize if, if other folks in the room, and particularly my colleagues, don't have it, but here it is in black and white, I didn't make this up. Having said that, Mr. Mays, I asked you a question last, at the last city council meeting, where I was consistently interrupted, and I'm going to purport that question, propose that question to you now. I had asked you that there was an emergency, which I deemed an emergency, because there was a crater hole on Carteret Place, it busted deep pipes, it was this, that, and the other, and, and it, it was the... There was this, that, and the other, and it was defined as an emergency, because the waters were turned off in several streets, particularly in my ward and also in my street. So I was just concerned, even as a citizen, let alone a representative of the West Ward. Having said that, I asked you, was there a, did the city have technology that could send out a blast to certain sections, streets, what have you, in the situation, tantamount to that particular situation? You said that you would get back to me. Have you, do you have any definitive information that you can enlighten me with?
The only information that I was given is that we're able to do that through the use of the school systems, system. So I'm not sure how it works, but in order to send out those type of blasts, I think we use whatever the school system has, but I'm not familiar with it.
Okay, this is my last question. On page seven, and I have it right here, I didn't make this up, this last council meeting's bill list, page seven, January 17, second entry from the top, it says, et cetera, et cetera, Dialyst Communications Corporation, final payment reverse 9/11, $15,000, under the auspices of the Orange Police Department. Are you familiar with that, Mr. Mays? Because when I asked that question, in fact, this document was a living document. So were you aware of that when I asked that question at the last?
No, I'm not aware of that.
Through you to Director Sims, could he answer my last question?
Director Sims?
Hacking Sims, please.
Director Sims, you were here at the last city council meeting.
Yes.
You're here now, so in the interest of time, you know, blah, 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 blah. Are you familiar with the second entry on the last bill list at the last city council meeting dated January 17, which you can look at if you so choose? Basically, it says your department, or under the auspices of your department, there was expenditure for $15,000, reverse 9/11, which has a lot to do with my question about sending out blast calls. Because of 9/11, in event of a volcano, it would be, it would be a 9/11 blast call. And so could you, could you speak to this, if you want to, if you want to look at it? This will be my last question, Council President.
This reverse 911 system came to my office previously, and I did not sign the purchase order for this, because we didn't have it, no one could answer a question on where it was. So if this bill list reflects that I paid for it, I did not, I didn't sign this purchase order for this.
No, I'm not, and I'm not trying to be sarcastic with you, disrespect you, but I'm saying, I'm not saying you paid for it, but I'm just saying you would agree that it's from under your department, and it would appear that it came from your department. That's what I'm saying.
Right, it does, but I have no knowledge of that.
So when bills come through your department, that's in the amount of $15,000, normally you sign off on it, or you aware of it, or you okay it, or you get a phone call or memo?
Yes, yes.
Would you know, Mr. Matt, pertaining to this here? Uh, sir? Because I asked Mr. Mays that question at the last city council meeting. So I'm, you know, I think, Mr., and you know, I'm not attorney, you know, obviously. You know, I should have been attorney or accountant, I could have been something, but I think you heard Director Sims say that basically he doesn't have any knowledge of that. Clearly, that comes from his department, and clearly, I didn't make that document up. I was just wondering, can you speak to that?
No, I can only tell you that we can pull this purchase order and get back to you.
January, that's the last bill list.
It says the Orange Police Department.
Clarification, Mr. Matt, that's the last bill list.
Okay.
You said it's the last bill list?
Yeah, it says it right there, from the last city council meeting, last bill list.
No, he was just saying he could pull it, so I just wanted to...
Okay, all right.
We pulled the purchase order.
But it's from the last...
Okay.
Oh, I'm saying, this is this bill list, you're saying?
No, last week.
No, last... That's what I thought he said.
It's the bill list from the last city council meeting, not tonight.
Council members, I think Councilman Abdul Rashid brought the bill list from the last meeting, which means we've approved it already.
Yeah.
So to pull it, I'm just saying that...
He's not saying pull the bill.
He just wants the information.
He wants the purchase order.
He wants to pull the charge, but it's been passed.
No, no, no.
Can I just listen to Mr. Matt? Yeah, I just want to listen to Mr. Matt, because I think he was in the middle making some statements.
Director Matt?
Can you conclude?
Yes, sir. This has the Orange Police Department as the department where this item has been charged. I will have to pull the purchase order in order to get more information.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Having, having heard Mr. Director Sims saying he really wasn't aware of it in terms of, not that he necessarily signs it, but just him being cognizant of it, you heard him say he wasn't aware of it?
Yes, I heard that.
Okay, with that, I conclude, thank you.
Ask if we all get a copy of the purchase order.
My colleagues, I believe certainly my esteemed colleague, Ms. Easton, would like to also be CC'd on that.
I will make the purchase order available to the clerk's office.
I conclude, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Abdul Rashid. By way of announcement, at the last council meeting, at the close of the council meeting, we got an announcement. Prior to announcing, and I could not make the announcement, because I could not verify, but since that time, we have been able to verify that prior employee, longtime resident citizen of Orange, very active in the community, Gregory, you might know him by knowledge, Brian, who worked in the finance department years, several years ago, has passed on. His funeral was this past weekend, and just by way of announcement, we couldn't verify it, because it came at the last council meeting. The citizen's family has held funeral services on this past Saturday, and he did in fact pass, so I know he was very close to a lot of people, so I wanted to get that information. And not by offering an excuse, but I want to remind everybody, last week, we were sitting in these same seats, and the clerk's office had to leave, close out this meeting, and prepare, close out that meeting and prepare for this meeting. So we do have a concern with the administration regarding receiving the agenda. However, this was a very unique case due to inclement weather. The clerk's office left this meeting last week at very, you know, maybe midnight, I think we left, and 11:30, 12 o'clock, closed out the meeting from, which should have been the 21st, and then start preparing for the meeting on the 4th. So one of the things that I know, since I've sat in this seat, that I have councilly asked the administration, was to please don't wait for agenda items on that last 12, on the 24th, on the last hour, to bring them to the clerk's office. We have not been able to get resolutions coming in as they are prepared in the department. They come in on that last hour. So we do need help from the administration, because if they come on that last hour, you only have that time to turn it around, as opposed to leaving here and resolutions start coming. And we need to work better in receiving the requests from the administration to the clerk's office, and that would be for anybody, as well as council members. If you leave here and you have a request, try not to wait until the Wednesday or Tuesday before, get it as soon as you know. Ms. Stewart, I don't know if you were here for the beginning of the meeting regarding the computers. Council members are very supportive of helping the City of Orange be very technologically savvy. However, and I heard you report, Director Mays, of the administration to get the list on them, but the reason that we have not approved, because several years ago, we realized that it was more efficient to purchase in bulk, and we've asked to do an assessment, and we have not gotten a response to the computers. And also, council members, Mr. Garfry spoke to you about volunteers inhabiting, and Councilwoman Easton, you made a response to have a meeting, and we are bringing volunteers here. He set the meeting date for Wednesday after the council meeting. I asked him if he can hold off, because I wanted to see if it was okay with you guys. So the council meeting was on February 18, and the meeting for the volunteers will be February 19 at 6:00 PM. And so he won't have a meeting in an empty room. I just wanted to make sure you were okay with having that meeting the day after the council meeting at 6:00 PM. And by way, Councilman Abdul Rashid?
No, I was just going to ask you...
No, I'm asking you, are you okay with having a meeting?
Oh, I'm fine, yes, yes.
Councilman Corbett?
Absolutely.
Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Council, and Councilman Merrable, you were not here. Did you hear about...
I saw an email from him today that spoke to volunteers, but it really, I didn't know what it meant, and...
He wanted each council member to bring five volunteers for, what's the program? Sorry.
Neighborhood crime watch.
To develop neighborhood crime watch all over the city, and if each person brought five volunteers, would be interesting to help start it up. We would just bring the people at night, and they can do speaking to them all at one time, as opposed to...
Should I assume that's people not already involved in neighborhood crime watches, or...
I would say they could help. No, it could be either or, because they can help, you know, create other...
It could be any one council member.
I nominate, everybody on that side of the room, no.
So is 19 at 6:00 PM fine for you?
Um...
The 19th?
While he's looking at that, Council President? While he's looking at that?
Yes.
Through you to the legislative research officer, can you see if legally the council, since we have no BA, is there, do we have a legal option to obtain a BA under the rest of circumstances since July 1, 2012?
Councilman Merrable?
I'm sorry?
Are you okay on the 19th?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones Bell?
That date?
Yes, 6:00 PM.
Yes.
Councilwoman Garbuttler?
Yes.
And the compliance, did you respond about the compliance that was suggested? Councilman Corbett, regarding, Ms. Stewart asked about the compliance that was suggested, and we passed the resolution, did you respond to that?
No.
The corrective action plan, rather, so we did pass a resolution about the corrective action plan. Okay.
Yes, we...
Did we approve it?
We passed the resolution to approve it.
Yes, we did.
Nothing, you voted no.
You voted no.
I know, I did.
And I voted no.
You said, no, we did.
No, I said, I know I did vote no.
I said, we, we did pass the resolution.
Oh, okay.
And I believe that, thank you so much. And as a reminder, for those who came in late, Councilman, Director Mays suggested that if anybody's having problems in inclement weather that's coming tomorrow, you can call the Public Works Office, but feel free to call any of the council, to let them, and they'll contact Director Mays. Clerk, move the agenda. Motion to close, I'm sorry.
Move. Second.
Moved by Councilman Corbett, second by Councilwoman Butler, all in favor? Any opposed?
You have to do a voice for the record, guys. All in favor?
Ayes. In favor?
Any opposed? Motion carries. Clerk, move the record. Move the agenda, please.
Now we're on ordinance table from August 7, 2013, regular meeting, bond ordinance 32, 2013.
Motion to lift it from the table. Stand by.
We have ordinance number 58.
An ordinance amending chapter 88.
Thank you.
A motion to remove from the table, 58-2013. Standing by.
Ordinance, okay, ordinance introduction for first reading. Ordinance 2-2012, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of, I'm sorry, 2014, an ordinance to amend the code of the City of Orange Township, Chapter 200, entitled Vehicle and Traffic, Section 200-52-1, Handicap Parking Spaces, 46 Hampton Terrace.
Is there a motion?
Move.
Second.
Moved by Councilman, I'm sorry.
Corbett.
Councilman Abdul Rashid, second by Councilwoman Butler. On a motion, both of y'all said it at the same time. Councilwoman, I'm sorry? Okay, Councilwoman Butler, on a motion?
No, I'm not on the motion, I'm saying she seconded it.
No, I'm saying, motion. Standing by, roll call.
Councilman Abdul Rashid?
In favor.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilwoman Easton? Yes. Councilwoman Garbuttler?
In favor.
Councilman Jones Bell?
Yes.
Councilman Merrable?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries, 78.
The motion is adopted on first reading, the public hearing is March 4, 2014. Moving to the consent agenda and ask that motion to suspend the rules to consider items to be added to consent agenda?
Move.
Moved by Councilman Corbett, second by Councilwoman Jones Bell. On a motion, I'm sorry, this is not, this is a motion to suspend the rule to add several items to the, and I believe to the agenda, 41, no, 42, 43, and 44.
What about 41?
41 is on the agenda.
It's on here already.
44?
42, 43, and 44. So motion to suspend the rule to add 42, proposed 42, 43, I'm sorry, 44?
Second.
Second by, first by Councilman Jones Bell. We, it was on the motion already, I'm sorry, I'm just reiterating it.
On the motion?
Councilman Corbett, I'm sorry.
What, you were going to say Garbuttler?
Yeah, I know, I wasn't, I was going to say, you're great, you're a great and brave person.
Anyway. What's the urgency behind Prop. 42, 2014?
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
These were actually on the agenda, and when we sent questions back to the administration, we could not get a response. Up to just the timing, the timing was crazy for this time, and when we got the response, the agenda was pushed out, but this is a timing issue, round Spotsia Millennium, this is a grant they have been working on, we're at the deadline, and it was supposed to be, with the timing and everything, should have been on the last agenda. 43, again, is a change order, it's just continuing on, and they were on the agenda, but getting the questions back, we, because of the timing. They did respond, but we're just going to head to 44.
I can speak to that?
Let me just see if they need somebody to speak to, just for one second. It's just for safety. Go ahead.
Well, it's because I was remiss when it was approved at the last council meeting. I wanted to waive it then, but I forgot. It involves school kids crossing at Lincoln Avenue School, so I meant to ask then, I forgot, so that's why I'm asking that it be walked on. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. Anybody else?
And just for the record, Councilwoman Garbuttler's far more prettier than I am.
Aw, that's sweet.
I would hope so. I mean, I would hope so, I mean...
It really didn't require any comment.
That man aren't pretty, they're handsome.
Thank you.
Oh, boy, y'all needed a break.
Maybe he wants to be pretty, let's leave him alone.
Y'all needed that break.
See, no more in the motion, and roll call to vote to add 42, 43, and 44 to the consent agenda. Moved by Councilwoman Jones Bell, second by Councilman Abdul Rashid. Roll call. Councilman Abdul Rashid?
Is this for all three, or just for one?
Three.
Oh, three, okay. In favor?
Councilman Corbett?
No.
Councilwoman Easton?
In favor.
Councilwoman Garbuttler?
No.
Councilwoman Jones Bell?
Yes.
Councilman Merrable?
Yes.
Council President Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries, 58, 28.
Items are added to the consent agenda. Smith, would you read the consent agenda statement, please?
I don't have it.
All items with an asterisk...
Oh, I'm sorry.
All items with an asterisk are considered to be routine by the city council, will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Councilman Abdul Rashid?
34, 34-2014, 35-2014, 36-2014, 38-2014, and 20-14, but that I conclude.
Forty.
Forty-2014.
Councilman Corbett?
None.
Councilwoman Easton?
None.
Councilman Marable?
Thirty-nine-2014.
Thirty-nine?
Yes.
And that's it? Councilwoman Jones Bell?
None.
Councilwoman Butler? None?
None.
Okay. Consent agenda?
Consent agenda. Resolutions 33, 2014, 37, 2014, 41, 2014, 42, 2014, 43, 2014, and 44, 2014.
Is there a motion?
Move.
Moved by Councilman Abdul Rashid, second. Second by Councilwoman Easton, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda, going back to those that were removed. Thirty-four-2014, a resolution authorizing the law firm of Feinstein, Reyes, Kaylin, and Booker LLC to represent the City of Orange Township in regard to tax appeal matters in amount not to exceed 25,000. Is there a motion?
Move.
Moved by Councilman Abdul Rashid, second by Councilwoman Easton, on the motion? Standing on, roll call. Councilman Abdul Rashid?
Not in favor.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Butler?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones Bell?
Yes.
Councilman Marable?
No.
Council President Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries, five ayes, two nays. Thank you. Motion carries. A resolution moving to 35-2014, a resolution authorizing Hendrix Appraisal Company, LLC, to represent the City of Orange Township in regard to appraisal on real property and tax appeal matters in amount not to exceed 15,000. Is there a motion?
Move.
Moved by Councilman Abdul Rashid, second by Councilwoman Jones Bell. On the motion? Standing on, roll call. Councilman Abdul Rashid?
Not in favor.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Butler? Councilwoman Jones Bell?
Yes.
Councilman Marable?
No.
Council President Williams?
Yes.
Councilwoman Butler?
We're on 35-2014.
Yes.
Motion carries, five ayes, two nays. Moving to 36-2014, a resolution authorizing the law firms of Feinstein, Reyes, Kaylin, and Booker, and Dakotas, and Dakotas Fitzpatrick &amp; Co., LLC, to represent the City of Orange Township in regards to tax appeal matters. Is there a motion?
Move.
Move by Councilman Abdul Rashid, second by Councilwoman Jones Bell. On the motion?
Council President, just to advise council members by, and I think this speaks to your point earlier, by virtue of the passage of 34-2014, the council in essence has to pass this, otherwise it'll render 34-2014 a nullity.
Thank you, Councilman Marable. Any other? Standing on, roll call.
I voted no for the previous one, so I'll be voting no for this one.
Roll call. Councilman Abdul Rashid?
Not in favor.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Butler?
In favor.
Councilwoman Jones Bell?
Yes.
Councilman Marable?
No.
Council President Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries, five ayes, two nays. Thirty-eight-2014, a resolution appointing council member April Butler, filling the unexpired term, and council member Edward Marable Jr. to the Personnel Committee. Is there a motion?
Move.
Moved by Councilwoman Jones Bell, second by Councilman Corbett. On the motion? Standing on, roll call. Councilman Abdul Rashid? Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Butler?
In favor.
Councilwoman Jones Bell?
Yes.
Councilman Marable?
I'll abstain.
Council President Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries, five ayes, two abstentions. Moving to 39-20-14, a resolution authorizing a professional service contract to SHI International Corporation and Spatial Data Logic, 290 Davidson Avenue, Somerset, New Jersey, 08873, to update the City of Orange Township with software integration of office process for more effective use of its geographical implementation system, GIS, in amount not to exceed 23,025. Is there a motion?
Move.
Moved by Councilman Corbett, second by Councilman Abdul Rashid. On the motion? Standing on, roll call. Councilman Abdul Rashid?
Not in favor.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilwoman Easton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Butler?
Pass.
Councilwoman Jones Bell?
Yes.
Councilman Marable?
No.
Council President Williams? Councilwoman Butler? Motion passes, four ayes, three nays. Moving to 40-2014, a resolution approving the bill list for council meeting, vote on February 4th, 2014, dated January 31st, 2014, approving checks issued by the Finance Department in accordance with Order 295. Is there a motion?
Move.
Moved by Councilman Corbett, second by Councilwoman Easton, on the motion?
Now, we don't look alike.
Move.
Council President?
I was in. Councilman Marable?
Yeah, this notion that services have already been delivered, so to speak, and we're being asked retroactively, if you will, to approve certain things, what options does that leave us if we choose not to approve something?
Were you speaking specifically?
Well, let's say the basketball jerseys. And for the record, the conversation earlier was that they have the names of the schools on them. They never did.
But this one does have the mayor's on it, they said.
No, no, I, well...
But I'm saying, because what are the motion about? Are you talking about the bill list?
No, no, I'm talking about the item on the bill list.
If we remove it, but we can't remove it because they have our...
That's my point exactly. What options do we have when we're being asked to vote on things that services have already been delivered? It's just a perfunctory exercise that, you know, what are we doing?